Okay, I will call to order the July 15th zoning board of Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting. It is 7:01 PM. And the first agenda item is, I would like to read into the record that in accordance with the provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by the Governor on June 16, 2021, this public meeting of a zoning board of appeals will be held remotely. However, to view the meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meetings. Meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed later on Lake Cam's website. Okay, first agenda item or the first petition is the Blackus Hearing. I'm surprised if I did not say that correctly. But let me scroll down in the hearing. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, July 15 at 7:00 PM. To hear the petition of Charles and Maria Blackus, a special permit under 6.1.3 and 7.4.6 requested to raise an existing nonconforming dwelling and rebuild a single-family dwelling on pre-existing and nonconforming lot as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is 7 Helen Street. And all of the remote issues I raised before hold for this hearing. So why don't we start off with who is going to be presenting for the petitioner?
That'd be me.
Okay, Charles, why don't you tell us what you're doing and then I'll read a few things into the record and we'll go from there.
All right, so currently there's a cottage on the property. I gave you guys a drawing with dimensions and stuff. We're basically looking to move down there full-time. The house currently probably isn't ready for a full-time home, so we're looking to just blow out what's there and build in basically the same footprint.
Okay, sounds pretty simple. You're gonna basically take what's there, raise it, and not take any additional square footage and stay within the same footprint of the existing structure that's there. Is that correct?
Mostly, yes. If we do, if I do expand on what's there, it'll be looking at the house from the street to the right, where I have an additional 50 feet between me and the butter. And if I take anything, it'll probably be another maybe 12 to 15 feet maximum.
So you'd still be within the setback where you have 50 feet?
Correct, sir.
And do you know what the coverage of the, what would that would do for the coverage of the lot? Would you still be within the 25% purview?
Uh, let me see. I have a picture here. I'm not 100% sure. However, before going forward, you know, when I do have a final plan, I'll present that and if it is, then I'm more than willing to conform to whatever you guys need.
Well, I mean, one thing we could do is condition the special permit to make sure that you do comply and are no greater than the 25% coverage. And that would mean that the building commissioner would not actually issue the permit until you had presented the plans that confirmed that you weren't going to go over that. So I'm, you know, it's the purview of the board to decide that, but I'm just pointing out that that would be one thing that we would probably want to make sure that you, if you're gonna increase and not go into the setback, we still want to make sure that you don't cover more area than you're supposed to.
Gotcha. Yeah, not a problem. Whatever you guys need, I'm willing to do.
Well, be careful. Don't say whatever we need.
In other words, I'm not looking, I'm not looking to make any waves.
I gotcha.
I'm just looking for a home.
Okay, so at this point, let me read in a couple of memos from other boards in regards to the petition. We have a memo, excuse me, from the Board of Health dated July 8 to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We received a copy of the petition for hearing of 7 Helen Street. The Board of Health requires a Title V inspection to be done on the existing septic system. If they plan to continue to use the septic for the proposed house, also a septic plan showing the footprint of the, excuse me, new house and the location of the existing or proposed septic system must be submitted to the Board of Health. Prior to approval, if the above conditions can be met, the Board of Health has no objections to the proposed house. So basically, you're, you're either gonna have to get a Title V with them if you use the same septic, or obviously, if you're gonna put a new septic in, you gotta go through them anyways. Are you planning on using the same septic system or are you gonna put a new one in?
I was planning on using the same one. My understanding is it's one that was put in approximately, how many years ago?
Oh, I don't know.
20, 15, between 15 and 20 years. When my wife bought the property, she had to, she got the Title V, she had to put in the new system. She did it then. So I don't know if you guys are familiar with Mark Moran?
It doesn't really, it's kind of, it's not really relevant in the sense that, just be aware that whether it's 15 years old, five years old, or 30 years old, that if you're gonna continue to use the same one where you're raising the structure, you're gonna have to get the Board of Health to sign off that it did pass the Title V.
Right, so what I'm saying is Mark's coming to connect my water to the water main that goes by the house? We have that new water main in Clarkshores?
Yes.
He's coming to tie that on and I know he does Title V, so I was gonna have him look at the system at the same time.
Okay, I just wanted to be-
Whatever I need to do, I'm gonna do, so.
Board of Health's gonna require that, so.
Not a problem.
Other, let's see, we also have a memo from the Planning Board dated July 13 to the Zoning Board of Appeals at their Thursday, July 2021 meeting. Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board had no comments regarding this petition. Bear with me as I-
Yep.
We also have a letter from the Conservation Commission dated July 14. Subject of 7 Helen Street, it's actually in regards to also the next petition, Bartelli Road. But in regards to both of these locations, they were visited on July 14, 2021, and no wetland areas were observed. That I have a location, therefore the commission has no concerns. And I think that's all we have on your petition for comments from other boards, so again, to reiterate, one thing you need to do is make sure you get that Title V done and it passes for the Board of Health. Do we have any other, no other, do we have any questions or comments from other board members? Do we have any questions or comments from anyone in the virtual audience, we'll call it? And Lake Cam, let me know if anyone's on Facebook, questions?
Nothing from Facebook.
Okay, so do we have anyone on the board and for this petition, I'm going to have Chris Sheedy, you're gonna step up and vote where Chris Carmichael isn't here. Do we have anyone who is interested in making a motion with potentially putting the condition of making sure they don't go over the 25% purview coverage on the lot?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? So the motion would be to grant the special permit as applied for with the condition that the new structure obviously is gonna fall within all the setbacks. But that they will also not, not just the structure, let me clarify, that they will not exceed the 25% purview coverage with any of the construction process. So I will do a roll call vote. Jeff Youngquist.
Aye.
Nora Klein.
Aye.
Chris Sheedy.
Yes.
Jerry Noble.
Aye.
And I am in favor as well. Passes unanimously. Charles, Kathy's gonna tell you the next steps.
Okay.
The ZDA tries to get the paperwork done within two weeks and then it's submitted to the town court. After that, there's a 20-day appeal period. If there's no appeals, the clerk will sign it and you'll get that in the mail. Then you would take that decision to the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds to be recorded and then you take the receipt to the Building Department so you can get your permit.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good luck, sir.
All right, folks. Have a great evening.
You too.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. I just, uh, Town Council's not on the call today?
Is that- They're not.
Is that a problem?
That's a problem?
No, is that a problem for us?
Oh, no, 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 they don't need to, we request them and we, we don't need her at this point. I won't take any more time than necessarily necessary, but where this board was completely kind of revamped last fall, she was here more, a little more than we normally would use them. But, you know, for certain types of hearings, when it comes to like the marijuana stuff and whatnot, we tend to to lean on her to make sure that we follow proper protocol, but we're not always gonna have Town Council on these calls, so. She acted as a crutch for me too, when I took over as chair, so some point you gotta walk on your own, right, Jerry?
You got it, Mr. Chairman.
Walk and crawl.
Whatever, whatever you gotta do to get to the finish line, okay.
There you go.
The next petition, Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, and acting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, July 15, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Hear the petition of Todd and Scott Freitas, special permit under 6.1.3 and 7.4.6 requested to raise an existing nonconforming dwelling and rebuild a single-family dwelling on pre-existing and nonconforming lot as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property is 5 Bartelli Road and all of the remote protocols are in place. For this hearing, Chris, you'll continue, Sheedy, you'll continue to step up in Chris Carmichael's absence and I'm gonna have Chris Campo vote where Mr. Youngquist has recused himself from this hearing, so. I would like to comment initially in regards to this hearing. I have received quite a bit of correspondence from folks in the neighborhood and we always like to take everyone's input in regards to how the petition is going to impact the neighborhood. But one thing I will caution everyone on the call on is where we need to, this board needs to focus on this project and this petition. Unfortunately, and please don't take this the wrong way, but if we start getting into comments in regards to things that have happened in the past or other things outside of the purview of this petition, I'll have to cut that conversation off, so please just be mindful of that and keep that keep that in the forefront when you are making, making comments, so. Having said that, who is presenting for this petition?
That would be me, Todd Freitas.
Okay, Todd, why don't you walk us through what you're looking to do?
No, so obviously it's a, a single-family home that was built in, you know, 1930, I believe it was, and we're gonna be demolishing that home and putting up a new home that will be, that I think that will fit really well in that neighborhood from what is there existing now, for sure.
Okay, is it gonna be on the same footprint, larger footprint? Is it gonna still meet all the setbacks?
Yeah, so it meets all the setbacks and it is gonna be larger.
Okay, how about the 25%?
I'm sorry, what?
The coverage area of 25%?
Yeah, I believe so. We have the drawing here. And I believe you also have a copy as well, and I believe we met all the criteria.
Correct, I have it in front of me and I do believe that that is the case. I'm just gonna look at it real quick. Yeah, according to the plans submitted by Mattigan, it will, the max coverage would be, including paint or driveway area would be 25% at most, so. Okay, let me read a couple of items from other boards into the record. You can bear with me. Okay, we have a letter from the Board of Health dated July 8 to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We received a copy of the petition for hearing of 5 Bartelli Road. The Board of Health requests, excuse me, requires a septic plan showing the footprint of the new house with the location of the proposed septic and well location to be submitted to the Board of Health prior to the approval. If the above conditions can be met, the Board of Health has no objections to the proposed house. Have you met up with the Board of Health yet?
Sorry, yes, 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 I did.
Okay, just be in mind, I mean, that's under their purview, but we want to make sure that you get their sign off.
Okay.
Our petition, our, if we do approve this special permit, it will not be issued until the Board of Health has approved it on their end. We also have a memo from the Planning Board dated July 13, 2021 at their Thursday, July 2021 meeting. The Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. Board recommends that any relief given to the, given by the Zoning Board of Appeal limits any business use to stay within the residential requirements of the property. So I'll ask the question, is there the intention to have a business being run out of the home, Todd?
No, not at all.
Okay. We also have the same letter that I read in the last petition from the Conservation Commission dated July 14. In regards to 5 Bartelli Road, this location was visited on July 14, 2021. No wetland areas were observed and therefore the commission has no concerns. And I believe that that is it. I will, for the record, state that we, as I referenced earlier when I opened this hearing, that we have received quite a few letters and quite a few pieces of information, which is all public records. All of the board members, I believe, do have station. That's correct, right, Kathy? Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna read it all into the record because honestly, I mean, it's pages and pages of information. What I will do is I will, after I ask the board, my fellow board members for comments, I will open it up to public comment and if folks want to make those comments, they can do so at that time. So at this point, do we have any questions or concerns from board members? Seems like they're meeting all the setbacks, they're not going over the 25% coverage. I am familiar with Bartelli Road and it looks like what they're putting up is gonna be definitely more in line with what's in the neighborhood anyways. So I do think it meets all of our litmus tests as far as, you know, it's not gonna have a negative impact, is in line with what's already there and they're not infringing on any setbacks and purview coverage issues. It looks like it's probably a good project to go forward, so. I don't see anyone on my board indicating they need to ask anything, so at this point, I will open it up to questions from the butters and the public in general. What I would ask you to do is please, I'm gonna have Lake Cam, if you can, I don't know, I don't know, either raise your hand or somehow indicate you would like to speak and I'm gonna have Lake Cam announce who's gonna speak first and if you could just let us know what your address is and announce your name, that'd be great. Looks like Andy, Andy O'Connor, correct?
Yes. So Andy O'Connor, 12 Bartelli Road. So I am in a butter and since receiving the letter, learning about the nonconforming lots, so I've been asking around and some of the answers from what you've gone through with the Seven Nelson, a 7 Helen project were answered, but basically the first question was, what's the process? How far along are we? What are some of the possibilities in terms of, would it be denied? I thought, you know, original footprint was key, but I'm hearing about the 25% that you mentioned, so it sounds like it's passed those requirements. And then second was what's involved in terms of if I decide to appeal? I heard 28 days and I guess I would just look to the website for forms or how I proceed with an appeal? Is that correct?
Yeah, in short, yeah, it's correct. I mean, Kathy could maybe able to shed a little bit more light on that, but you do have, there is an appeal process that you, that you could go through, but as far as technically how that process works, I would, I would recommend that you can just get in touch with the Building Commissioner's office if you do decide. If, first of all, we do decide to grant it,
Yep.
with it, they can indicate you will point you in the right direction for the appeal process. There is an option to appeal.
Okay, so then I'll follow up on that. And then the third is, if I didn't appeal and we were to proceed, I know the letters have been sent and from our experience, particularly with the builder, without getting into the details on, you know, this call, but we would, I would like to work in some restrictions in terms of the permit, whether it's hours of operation, how long it will take for the structure to go up, vehicles, and then also the status of his current violation on Lot 7 with his container.
Okay, well, first of all, I'm gonna start in reverse order just because the last one's probably the easiest one for me to answer. As far as any violations that are going on on other pieces of property, that is, I'm comfortable even without Town Council being on the call telling you that that's really out of our purview. We don't have any oversight on that. You'd need to deal with the Building Commissioner.
Yep.
In regards to length of time that it takes to put the structure up, again, that that really, in my opinion, kind of falls outside of our purview too. I mean, they have a certain amount of time in our bylaws from a regulatory standpoint in order to complete projects, so that would be the Building Commissioner. We do have bylaws that do restrict hours, not restrict, but allow for certain hours to construct now. In a lot of cases, those bylaws have to do with new developments, new houses. This is an existing development that is definitely mature. So if you have any concerns or the neighbors do about putting restrictions on, you know, hours of building, you know, I would, I would definitely encourage you to, to ask now and it's, again, it's, it's up to the board overall to see if we want to condition it to say, I don't know, you can't stop before a certain time in the morning, you can't, you know, you can't do construction on Sundays. Again, I'm just giving you examples. I'm not saying that's what we do, but if you want to have those asks, now's the time to do it.
Okay. That's helpful. So yeah, I definitely would, I think the container you said, building instructor, length of time. I guess we would check the bylaws. Certainly hours of operation is one from our experience that I would like to discuss with the board.
Is there a preference that you're looking for?
Yeah, just, I mean, I think about when we built and when I see other people, especially when they're being built by a third party, you'll see normal working hours, whether it's eight to five, maybe sometimes Saturday, but you know, definitely not Sundays. Usually it's done by five. I think that, in this case, I'm not sure, but at least our experience of then, the hours are, are beyond those hours. So that's, that's what I would kind of expect.
Okay, Todd, do you plan on, do you have any ideas as to when the builder will be? Will they be building on the weekends? Will they be doing stuff during the week at night, early in the morning? Do you have any idea what the timeframe is?
I mean, I understand that, you know, it's always a concern to have construction is always, you know, impacts neighborhood, you know? And I, and I get that that can be, you know, noisy and stuff like that. As far as the times, I would think that a typical time is usually seven to 3:30 on, you know, Monday through Friday. Saturday is sometimes, depending on the town, you know, depending on if it has to be a 9:00 AM start, but a lot of times, you know, Saturdays are required to try to get the project moving along. The Sundays are typically no, it doesn't really have to get into Sundays. But, you know, there's always gonna be, I'm sure, just like if you were doing your, a home project, you know, you'd start a saw or something, but you'd be at a respectful time, you know? But I'm sure that, you know, that we could be accommodating to the time that works for the neighborhood. We're not, we're not out to try to, you know, make enemies here. We're just trying to put up a beautiful house and take down a house that doesn't look so pretty, so. So really, that, whatever we can do to accommodate, you know, we are neighbors.
Well, this is one person's opinion, being mine, that I don't think seven to 3:30 or four, whatever it is during the week is unreasonable. I mean, that's, some people don't want to hear stuff at seven in the morning, but I don't think that's incredibly early. I think the weekends would be more my concern. And it sounds like you really don't have much of an intention of having anybody do any work on Sundays. So maybe we could build something in to restrict as much as possible on Sunday and maybe move the start times on Saturday you know, back a little bit, so you're not out there at the crack of dawn on a Saturday and people wanna sleep in and relax. Again, the issue here really is, this commute, this is, this is a a neighborhood that's been around for a significant amount of time. It's not like it's expected to have a construction project going on, so. Would, would you be minimal to restricting Sundays and maybe starting pushing the start time back on Saturdays?
No, I think, I think that would, that could be accommodating, I'm sure. I'm sure that could, that would work out fine.
How's that sound to you?
Yeah, that sounds good. Certainly the weekday hours are fine, no Sundays and then agreeing what the time is on Saturday.
Nine o'clock work for everybody?
Yeah, me, yeah, I, yeah. I was thinking more like eight, eight-thirty, but you know, if nine is what works, then that, that would be, that would be fine, you know?
Andy, can you live with eight-thirty?
Yeah, I can live with eight-thirty.
Okay. Perfect. Great. Anything else, Andy?
Yeah, I mean, and I don't know, but this in terms of, like, just with some of our experience when Priscilla and some of the runoff, the drainage and the road is, you know, big trucks will be coming in and everything and the four to five, five full-time current residents are in charge of everything related to the road. So if there's damage or, you know, additional strain to the drainage and things, like, is there anything that we could do in terms of what, you know, any, anything that happens to the road itself? I know it's a private road, but.
Yeah, unfortunately, again, I think this, that's gonna be outside of our purview where it's a, where it's a, where it's a private road. I'm not really sure how you can restrict the vehicles that, that, that come in. I mean, again, we can, you know, the condition on the hours of operation will restrict when they can, when they can actually be showing up, but as far as, you know, they, if they need a large truck to, to, to show up to do something, they need a large truck to show up to do something. Now, if that truck causes damage to the road, I would assume that becomes a civil matter that you'd have to, to deal with that. The contractor or the truck company or whoever at that point in time, so.
And then I guess just going back in terms of the approval, the status, so is it pending septic and well or something, or is it like already ready, or is that part of what the approval will include?
Well, our, if we were to approve it, you know, we, we don't have, the Board of Health has purview over that, so it's really, I'm not sure where it is with the Board of Health. Todd may know if they've already approved him or not, we can ask him in a second. But even if we were to turn around and approve the special permit with or without conditions on it, the Building Commissioner wouldn't be able to issue- the building commissioner wouldn't be able to issue the building permit until they got the sign off and approval from, from the Board of Health. So, has the Board of Health signed? I know you, you said that you, you know what's going on. Has the Board of Health already approved the septic?
Yes, yes, they have.
All right, so you can be assured that the septic they're putting in is, is the right one, if that's what your concern is, Andy.
Okay.
Are we good?
I think those are, yeah, and then going back to the, yeah, I think I've covered most of the points from my list.
Okay. Do we have anyone else on the call who is looking to comment? Okay, I see Mr. Murray putting his hand up.
Yes.
Address?
Uh, Jim Murray, 10 Bartelli Road.
Okay, sir.
Um, just going back to the, uh, a non-conforming lot. I'm just wondering, um, how often that the board approves, um, these non-conforming lots where the structure is actually being destroyed, um, the currently existing non-conforming structure and then relocated in a different part of the lot and essentially blown out to five times the size of the original structure? Is that a precedent that's out there?
Uh, two, I'm gonna, again, we can answer yours in reverse order, I guess. Uh, the zoning board doesn't set precedent, so it's irrelevant whether we've approved one or not before. Uh, and I honestly don't know off the top of my head how often we've done this. Although I can tell you that this is not the first case where someone has raised a, a structure and put something up, uh, in a different area that does, um, take up more square footage. As far as whether it's two times, three times, four times as the size, um, I'm not sure. It all has to do with the size of the lot and the available area that the individual can build on. If you're gonna be able to meet all the setbacks and stay away from going over that 25% previous coverage, um, and you're not a detriment to the neighborhood and it's with character, um, I think historically, um, the, the, the board has, has granted those in most cases.
Um, okay, so you think there is other situations? Because I'm just thinking about other lots around the lake where people have, you know, smaller lots where, you know, you're gonna tear it down to three season and then you're gonna build a four-bedroom colonial essentially on, on a small lot around the lake in a non-conforming area. And is that a dangerous precedent to set?
Again, sir, we don't set precedent. We just, we look at the petition as they're submitted.
Okay, so then the question becomes, is this a concern on this lot then specifically? You know, that this is, you know, essentially was a, for many years, a rental unit, um, uh, used on and off for the past 20 years that we've been here and now it's going to be a five times larger, full-time, um, home. Is essentially the same continuous use of a non-conforming lot over that period of time?
Uh, well, I mean, again, it's up to the board as a whole. I guess you'll find out if we think it falls into the character of the detriment. So, I mean, if you want to record, you think it's a detriment to the neighborhood and you think it's bigger than all the other houses in there and shouldn't be, you can, you can state that clearly for the record, um, you have a right to do so.
Right, it's, it's definitely not bigger than all the other houses that are there in the neighborhood. Um, there are positives to it, but it's certainly a different use of a non-conforming lot.
Yeah, that, that really doesn't have an impact, whether you're being used as a cottage rental or whether it's now gonna be used this full-time.
Okay, um, moving on to, um, essentially, uh, Mr. Freitas is saying that, uh, you know, I understand that he's developing a lot, but, uh, my understanding is that Mr. Freitas won't be occupying the home. Um, that it will be occupied by the builder. Um, the builder is currently living on our street in a different home as a guest. Um, over the last year, uh, the builder has caused quite a disruption in the neighborhood. Um, he's operating his construction business from the neighborhood with many commercial vehicles existing on lots five, seven, three and on the street. It's a small private road. Uh, he's been parking commercial vehicles on this street for over a year. Uh, it's very narrow, very dark, um, and I don't think that it's to the benefit of this neighborhood to have a commercial enterprise being run on a regular basis and to continue to run in a new home, uh, uh, on a regular basis. So, um, you know, we've, we've addressed this situation, um, with the planning board and with the building inspector. Uh, but we just wanted to bring it to the attention of the zoning board that this, you know, this house will, that will be used for storing commercial vehicles, because it has been in the past and they're out, you know, I know there are bylaws, the bylaws say that they can't be, but there's no enforcement mechanism apparent to us or available to us.
Well, Mr. Murray, all I can, all I can tell you at this point is unfortunately, from probably where you're sitting, um, we have no oversight on, you know, what, who lives in the house or, um, what's done out of the house after the fact. I mean, that's an enforcement issue and, um, as you had pointed out, I mean, that's, that's, that's under the, the enforcement of the structure, um, honestly, during the construction and especially after the structure falls with the building commissioner's office. So, um, you know, we, there's really nothing we can do to, for us to condition a special permit, basically reiterating what the town bylaws say, doesn't, doesn't do anything. The town bylaws are already in place that restrict what you can do for businesses out of a residential, um, house. And if, if anyone is going beyond that, um, unfortunately, it's not the, it's not the purview of our, our board to, to enforce that or to monitor that.
Okay, I'm just tying it to the point of whether or not this, this home would be a detriment to the neighborhood. And I would suggest that, given the occupation and the way that this person had used it in the past, that it will be a detriment to the neighborhood going forward.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have any?
I have a couple of things, if possible. Um, I know we spoke of the drainage issue. I, I did send some pictures of the drainage that has been altered, uh, with the development of lots five and seven or the change in topography that has taken place due to the land clearing and the creation of a driveway there. So I'm wondering, um, with these new curb cuts and a new driveway, uh, for lot five, um, the driveway, which is, I think, I don't know if it's impervious areas that counted against impervious area in the square footage requirement of 25%?
Uh, it normally is, uh, and there are engineered plans that were submitted that are showing that the impervious area will be no greater than the 25%, so.
I, I have a copy of the plan. I don't see a driveway plan on there. Is there one present in the plan that you have?
Nora's looking at hers right now. I'm pulling mine back up. Be it first, Nora, you can chime in.
I'm not showing, um, a driveway noted on here. Well, no, I, I take that back. There is a gravel driveway noted on here. It looks like it's a semicircle gravel driveway.
My understanding is that's the existing driveway, so it's a depiction of what currently exists.
That would be the driveway.
On the plan that's shown with the application, the front of that circular driveway goes through the front of the, um, garage that's shown on the drawing?
Yeah, that is the garage. It goes into the garage. The, the lines do fall through the house. Well, that's really obviously not the case. I'm not driving through the garage.
Right, I'm just saying that that's the way that that appears on that plan. So the bays of the driveway of the, uh, proposed house appear to be on the left side of the building. But this depicted circular driveway goes through the front of the house.
Okay, Mr. Murray, um, if you look at that, you're looking at the plan, correct?
Uh, I'm looking at both the, uh, site plan for submitted with the application and then I'm looking at this, the plans for the home itself.
Well, if you look at building permit plan, which was submitted by Madigan Land Surveying LLC, um, on the left bottom, um, a little left, hang on a second. I just scrolled myself past it. On the bottom left side, it talks about zoning residential area 70,000, frontage 175, maximum structure, um, cover 25%. So they're confirming on plans submitted by the surveying, uh, company that they will not, um, go in excess of 25%.
With the structure?
No, if you look, it says max structure backslash pave.
Okay, okay, so they're gonna submit a plan to show a driveway at some point in the future?
But guess what? We're gonna, we'll, we'll condition it to state that he will not go over 20%. So that should take, right.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, in the issue with the drainage, that's the additional flow of drainage that is coming off the street as depicted in the pictures that I sent. Um, again, we have a very fragile drainage system, um, on the road as it stands now. Uh, there's only one drain at the bottom of the road that the entire road is flowing into at this point. Uh, that then goes into a basin at the bottom of the street and actually, under heavy stress, outflows that and goes down onto Priscilla Road, which has caused a lot of friction in the past. I'm just concerned with the new driveway cuts that are being put in and the driveway that was installed on lot seven, um, that it might overwhelm the existing drainage system on the road. Is that a concern? Is that, can that be a concern or a condition of a special permit? That any alteration of a failed drainage system would be the responsibility of the part, you know, the, those that are creating this situation? It's existed for 20 years.
Can I chime in one second? Um, so the, the driveway, it's, uh, the existing driveway is gonna stay, uh, right now it's a half moon that you see on the drawing. So now it's going to just be half of that. So it's only gonna, it's gonna be the existing driveway, so it's not changing, you know, much of a curb cut, um, for your drainage. You know, so we're not cutting another driveway. We're using the existing driveway that's been used for, you know, since, uh, 1930.
So Todd, to confirm then, the driveway, if it's gonna be reconfigured, um, on the property, because obviously the, you know, the house is gonna, or the garage area is gonna, gonna come towards the front a little bit more. But at the end of the day, the curb cuts is to where the driveway opens.
That's the, that's the intention. That's the intention.
So you're fine if we were to condition the curb cuts to the driveway will be in the same areas that they are now?
Yeah, that should be, that's correct.
Okay, all right. What else, Mr. Murray?
Um, I believe that's it. Um, I would just, again, uh, when we talk about compliance with, um, the existing lot, I know that you don't want to hear information regarding lot seven, uh, since it's not the lot that's applying, but currently, um.
Not in our purview, sir. We, we, we have no authority over lots and what's being done with them. But we're only, our only concern is we do need to put blinders on here, okay, once in the petition, so.
Okay.
Do we have other questions? Comments? Go ahead. You're muted, Andy.
Thank you. Um, so just coming back to the during construction, if we're talking about kind of changes to the permit, is there a way to confirm that like any of the construction-related equipment and machines will be off the road during construction? Can that be worked in?
Uh, you'll, you need, you'd need to help me out a little bit here. When you say construction equipment off of the road, what are you, what are you concerning? What, what do you mean?
Yeah, like the, like, you know, Bobcats and anything that's involved with, um, putting the house up to like stay on the lot during construction. You know, historically, these things have made it out into the road and.
Parking for the night or?
Yeah, yeah.
That, that's, that's reasonable. I don't see why, I personally, again, it's, it's up to the board. We'll all, we're all gonna have to at some point. But I don't see why we, we couldn't put a restriction in there that says any construction-related, um, equipment, um, should be on, uh, off of the road. You know, obviously, if during the day, you know, you're driving a Bobcat out to pull something off a truck and whatnot, we, you know, it's almost impossible to restrict that, but.
Yeah, yeah, it's more about, yeah, it's more about at night, you know, trailers and Bobcats, because, you know, today we deal with those out there at night and everything as well. So put them on the lot if you're using them during construction.
Uh, again, I don't have an issue with that. We can see if the board's amenable to add that as a condition.
Okay, yes, I think that was, and then just generally during construction, you know, dust control, things like that, which I think are probably common.
Yeah, I'm not gonna profess to say, I know those off the top of my head, but I do know we have construction bylaws as far as what people can do during the construction phase and keep things.
Okay.
Being less impactful anyway, so.
Awesome, thank you.
I don't wanna rewrite the, uh, our, our bylaws for construction.
Yeah.
And a permit here. All right, there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments? Lake Kim, anybody on Facebook chiming in?
Nobody on Facebook.
All right, now that we've had some comments, do any of my fellow board members have any follow-up questions for the petitioner or comments that we wanna share with each other?
Hey, John, the only thing I do in regards to the concerns on, uh, the other lots, I do hope that they take the steps with the appropriate boards and, and departments that they need to. Uh, but as you've said, uh, that's not within our scope and what we're dealing with here tonight.
Correct, and I would hope everybody complies with the bylaws in towns, whether they're before us or not. Okay, so, anybody wanna take a stab at a, uh, motion?
John, I, I've taken some notes, so I'll take a stab and, um, please feel free to jump in if I really mess this up.
I'm sure you haven't. I got notes though too, and yours are probably better than mine, so go for it.
Oh, it's been one of those days. So I, I move that we, uh, accept and grant the special permit under six point one point three and seven point four point six with the following conditions: hours of operation Monday through Friday to be seven to four, Saturday eight thirty to two. We didn't really say the end time, so I kind of made that one up. And then no, um, construction to take place on Sundays. Second, that construction equipment be off the road on nights and Sundays when construction is not being conducted. Number three, the pervy is not to exceed 25%. And number four, current curb cuts are to remain.
I think you got them all, Nora.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone want to, Nora's motion?
I'll second with a provision to add one more, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Um, okay, why don't you tell us what the one is and then we can see if Nora wants to revise her?
Just to reiterate, um, um, the petitioner's, um, commitment to keep this a residential property for residential purposes only.
I'm, I'm not opposed to putting that on, but just for the record, it's what they, it's complying with the bylaw anyways. I mean, you, maybe, maybe the best thing to do, Jerry, is if, when we, we can ask the petitioner right now for the record if they, that is their intent and they agree. Because I'm, I'm just putting conditions on stuff that, we're just reiterating our bylaws anyway, so. Todd, are you, are you agreeable that, that your intention is to keep that house, um, as a residence and not to operate a business out of it?
It's gonna be, I mean, if, if you think a business would be, if you're in construction and you own your own business, you know, that and you have vehicles with your name on it, you know, and you pull in and you go home to work. I don't think that that is considered a business. It's not.
Todd, let me rephrase that then. My apologies. It's your commitment to not operate a business that is outside of the home-operated business, um, bylaws for the town of Wakefield.
Correct. That's right. No, there's no business to run it out of that home. You just go to work and you have a business and you go and you sleep there. That's the, that's the intent.
Jerry, does that make sense?
That's, that's satisfied me, yes. Thank you.
So you're second in Nora's?
I, I am gonna second Nora's motion, yes.
Okay, to my board members only, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, vote. Nora?
Yes, I.
Rashid?
Yes.
Jerry Noble?
Yeah.
Chris Campo? Chris Campo?
Yay.
And I am in favor as well. Motion carries unanimously. Kathy, you're up.
Uh, the ZDA will try to get the paperwork done within two weeks and then it's submitted to the town clerk. There is a twenty-day appeal period. If there are no appeals, the town clerk will sign it and it will be mailed to you. Then you take the decision to be registry of deeds to record it and you bring the receipt to the building department, the apartment.
Okay, Mr. Freitas, you're all set. Assuming you said thank you, you're on mute, but you're welcome. Good luck.
Said thank you for everybody's time. Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Back to, I think, the light lifting here. We have minutes to approve, so. Let me, um.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like, I would like to move that we approve the May twentieth, twenty twenty-one minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Gosh. Nora, don't put those away. You're gonna keep me honest here, because I, I reviewed them, but I don't have them in front of me. Who, who was and wasn't at that meeting?
All right, you were there. Jeff was there. I was there. Jerry was there. Chris Carmichael, Chris Campo, Chris Shady.
So everyone was there that's on the call, so. Motion, do we have a motion approved? We have a second and roll call vote. Uh, Chris Sheed?
Yay.
Nora?
Yay.
Chris Campo?
Yay.
Jeff?
Yay.
Jerry?
Yay.
I am in favor as well. Motion carries. How about the June seventeenth minutes?
I'll move that we accept the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one minute, uh, minutes.
We have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, Jeff seconded, Nora made the motion. Any discussion? Was everyone at that meeting, Nora?
John, Jeff, myself, Chris, both Chris's. All three Chris's.
Jerry wasn't, so you're not voting.
Jerry was not, right.
Okay, all in favor. Chris Sheed?
Yay.
Nora?
Yay.
Chris Campo?
Yay.
Jeff?
Yay.
And I am in favor as well. Motion carries. So, the, well, let's see, under old business, we have the sign bylaw update. Anybody feel like talking about the sign bylaw update?
If you don't mind, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I just have a couple of comments.
Go right ahead. Before you start, Nora, here's two things I'm gonna say. Any, uh, I'd like to discuss it now, because we've kind of been putting this off for a while, but in addition, if you don't have comments, please send any comments after the fact. Please take a few minutes and, and look at it to Kathy, so then I can circle back with her and we can we can kind of put everything together and, and get some, and get, get our comments over the plan. Sorry, go ahead, Nora.
Oh, that's okay. So the comparison of the packet that was sent is between Lakeville, Ducksbury, and I believe Situate. Okay, and quite honestly, in organizational manner and specifics to uh, the sign regulations, I really find Lakeville's to be uh, much more encompassing and much easier to understand. The biggest difference I've had was Ducksbury's square footage of their sign is less. We have, I believe, thirty-five square feet. Ducksbury's twenty-five square feet. But then you go to Situate, okay, and they have a hundred square feet signs. So I, I definitely am not in favor of going as low as twenty-five, but I'm not in favors of going as high as eighty. Should we move a little bit? I don't, I don't think that's much because I don't make the bylaws, but I don't find any significant difference since of Lakeville, Ducksbury, and, and Situate. So that's my comments.
Yeah, I'll agree. I'm, I'm not gonna say my, I, I remember every bit of comparing all three, but I, I do think that, uh, there's not a, there, there are no glaring differences, um, from one community to the next, so. Um, and, and again, I don't think they were necessarily looking for us to say, you know, what should we do that those two towns do? I think they were just giving us the jumping off point, and even if there's nothing that comes from those two towns, if there's something in general, I think that we just don't think we should allow this, or we think they should be allowed by rights, so they don't have to come to the zoning board. Even I think that's part of, I shouldn't say I think, I know that's part of the reason why this, this is out there right now. There are certain cases, uh, not just with signs, with a lot of things that come before us that maybe they really don't need to come before us, so. You know, don't put, put ourselves in a corner and say, listen, what do we like out of these two that they sent us? In general, what do we think would make the most sense for for the sign by law in general, so. Anybody else have any comments?
Uh, John, the only thing I would say is, I, I, I don't know, I seem like we get bogged down a lot with the signage and to me, it should just be like black and white. It's square footage, maybe a restriction on illumination and flashing and, um, have it relate to the, the business that's operating out of that, um, building. Like I, I, I'm not really understanding the need for all these, uh, exceptions. Everyone's claiming like I, I get everybody wants more space, more advertising, the bigger the better, but, um, it, at some point, it just becomes pollution. It's like eye clutter, you know? And I, I think if we have a reasonable square footage, which I think the town has now, then we can just roll with what we have.
Well, I think to answer your question, and unfortunately, I don't think this is, this is specific to the sign by law. Uh, if, as you read through this, if you look at why we have so many sections, uh, it's, it's to prevent people from, unfortunately, simplifying doesn't always make it simple. Um, and if you say this, this size sign and that's it, then people make the argument of temporary signs or some of its, you know, safety. You know, they don't want you to use, you know, green, yellow, and red to, you know, I, I'm assuming that's because I don't want you to confuse it with traffic light. I'm not so sure how you would do that with a sign off to the side of the road, but I, I do think, um, a lot of, a lot of this is to clarify people taking advantage of, of oversimplifying something, so. I, I'm on board with you, Chris. I wish it was a lot simpler, but I, I'm just adding some, some context to, you know, the, um, why I think some of these bylaws get so, so down in the weeds, because a lot of people manipulate and get around them if we're not clear, and this is, this is how they're overly clear. But having said that, if there's any areas that you think, listen, this is dated, or we don't need to worry about that anymore, or, you know, this is just getting too into the weeds. Like I said, let's, let's put a list together and we'll consolidate it, uh, you know, email everything to Kathy and Kathy, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong here, but it's not like the planning board's acting on this right away. Um, so I, we just kind of wanted to get the ball rolling. We keep, it's been on the agenda for a while now, so at least we're having the conversation and, you know, maybe next time we'll have a couple of the comments and yeah, I'd like to get this over to the planning board before, before the summer's out and then it, then we can get it off of our agenda. All right, I don't see anybody else, uh, waving their hands at me. So do we have any new business to come before the board?
I was just curious, are we gonna go to, uh, in, in meetings? We're gonna be, uh, the next one? We're gonna be?
Are you lonely, Jeff? Are you lonely? Do you want to see us?
No, no, I, I don't care. One way or the other. I'm just curious.
I, yes, at some point, we will. It's funny, I just had this conversation on a, a, the Board of Assessors, uh, earlier, um, and Kathy, what, where are we with, um, where we can do this? Because part of the, there's, there's two parts to this. I mean, the first part is the restrictions have been lifted enough that we can have these, these meetings now, um, as long as everyone on this board, and I'll ask the question, maybe I'll, I won't ask a question for anybody on the spot, but um, unless anybody is opposed to it, and you can let me know later, you don't need to answer on screen, um, uh, but I, my inclination is to start doing these in-person again, um, unless there's a, a, a you know, compelling reason to, to hold one remotely. Um, keeping in mind that although it seems a long way away, the governor's order expires in April of next year. I know that seems like forever, but that'll be here before we know it, so we're gonna be back at some point, um. And I, I do think there's a lot to be had within-person meetings, uh, versus the on-the-screen stuff, so. The other aspect of it too is, is, is the space, and I know there's been some back and forth, although I think we're, we're almost beyond that as far as when where we hold our meetings will be available. So Kathy, what's, what's the latest on that? I know you've told me this before, but I don't want to misspeak.
So the library is available now. Um, you will still have to social distance, like that is the, the health agent's or the town's policy. So it is available in August. However, in August, there's gonna be probably most definitely, uh, nature's remedy hearing, which is something I think I had mentioned that you did want Amy there, and in that case, the remote would be, would be better, would be easier.
Yeah, that's a perfect example. If we're gonna have I, I would, I would at this point tell you, I would, I would defer to remote as long as we have the option just from saving her to have to, to come down here and in all reality, when Amy's coming to a meeting, it's usually something that's got a little more meat on the bones, which means you may have a little bit more of a crowd there and, uh, not that it's always that way, but that's the only thing we need to keep in mind, so. Um, like I said, why doesn't, you know, if anybody has a, an, an issue with, with doing in-person, shoot me an email, um, and if I don't get anything, uh, we'll be discreet about it, but, um, then, you know, maybe in September, we can, we, we can go back to having, um, in-person as long as we don't, we're not gonna have an overwhelming amount of people, not be able to social distance, and if Amy, um, council isn't gonna be there. Or depending on the situation, maybe even if council is there, um, it may be, it may be one where we have it in person, so. It's kind of a long-winded answer to your question, but, um.
Yeah, that's okay.
Fortunately, it's not as simple. The simple answer is yes, we will be back together soon, but I'm just not so sure if it's gonna happen in the month, but definitely some point in the early fall, uh, we will have in-person meetings again. Any other new business or questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Wow, I was getting nervous. I thought you guys said.
I think there's a ballgame on right now.
Okay, so Jeff made the, uh, motion, we have second.
Second.
Jerry seconded. Uh, let's do this the right way here. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, Chris Sheed?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Chris Campo?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And I am as well. So meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, and we will see you all.